I always call it, I say, "Talk down to me, give me the Cliff Notes version." That's all these guys want.
All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, call the meeting to order. Can we, uh... Invocation and pledges, we're not doing that. Roll call, please. Cheryl, are you my person?
Uh, I am your person for the last time, Yansen.
Well, that's interesting. This is my last time as well. All right.
Can everyone turn on their mics, please, so that everyone can hear it all?
Testing.
Okay. Chairperson Everett?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Here.
Commissioner Spildee?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we can make a note that Mr. Commissioner Brown called in, and he's gonna try to make it, but if not, we'll excuse him at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Yeah, he did call me this afternoon and indicated that he is in route from Oklahoma, driving, so depending on traffic, he said he was gonna try to make it, but we'll press on. The next item is approval of the minutes from our April 28th meeting. Everybody should have received a copy of that in advance. So at this time, does anybody have any additions, corrections, deletions, anything like that?
Nope.
If not, can I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll just do an "I" vote on that. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could have the floor for a second.
You may.
Um, I'd like to do a couple of introductions for the benefit of everyone in the room. Next to Ms. McGrady is Ms. Gwen Sinkfield, and she is Michelle's new planning and zoning assistant, and she is thriving in her new job and doing very well, and I expect her to, uh, continue to do so, and I think you'll see more and more of her. As that being said, uh, tonight is the last night that you'll see Ms. McGrady in this, uh, capacity. Tomorrow night, she'll be not demoted, but moved back to her normal position and, and normal pay rate, so Gwen will take over from here on out. And then sitting between Ms. McGrady and, uh, City Attorney Trask is, uh, a new attorney in Tom's firm. Tom, do you wanna do that introduction?
John Schaefer is his name. John was with Pinellas County for some thirty years. He retired from Pinellas County, and he got smart, and he came back to work for us. I should say it that way, but John is kind of, uh, sitting in today to see how Madera Beach does its planning commission. It's always good to show an example of something that works well, um, and so he's here, um, and maybe a three or four months down the road, he may take over, um, and do this meeting so I could have a night off.
Come on, Tom. You sleep...
Every once in a while, much. So anyhow, so John is here just to sit in, um, and I was telling him that he should drive separately because I expected a couple hundred people tonight, um, and, uh, but it doesn't look like that way, so maybe he'll stay for the entire meeting. I wanted him to be able to leave early, so...
Okay.
But anyhow, I wanted you to, to meet John, and...
Welcome, John.
Hey, John, nice to meet you.
Hello.
Welcome.
You'll be back.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
Mr. Everett, coupled with that, again, and, uh, the city attorney commented there, we've got an empty audience tonight, and I won't rant and rave like I did over the email wires this morning, but there was a lot of rhetoric on the, on the internet over the weekend, and it occupied a majority of my weekend, which is not the problem, but the problem is, is that it was complete...
Yes.
...moronic rhetoric, I think, is what I put into the, uh, email. So, with, with that being said, um, staff actually prepared for a, a group tonight, and we have a Cliff Notes version of what we're doing tonight, which involves, has nothing to do with the two major developments that are planned in Madera Beach.
Right.
But since we went through that exercise, I figure, uh, between Louis and, um, Michelle, they can probably shorten this meeting even further by giving you what we prepared for all day, expecting, you know, a couple hundred people in the audience.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll hand it off to the two smart ones over here.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, the next item on the agenda is new business, which contains the ordinances. I mean, and just as a side note, I thought the memorandum that you prepared, Mr. Serna, was excellent. I, I was quite clear on what we were doing, and in fact, I pushed that out to some social media sites this afternoon, and...
Which explains...
And that may be the reason no one's here.
Which explains our attendance tonight, probably.
Because I, I just think there, I think there was a lot of confusion, and I, I posted that and said, "I, I think there's a lot of confusion, need to read this." So, um, but anyway, I'll hand it off to you.
All right, uh, well, uh, I'm gonna be handling items B, C, D, and E, those four ordinances, and, uh, they're all interrelated, and they're all, uh, I'll say routine, uh, amendments that need to be done. Item B is the land development code revisions, uh, dealing with school and transportation concurrency. Uh, C, D, and E are comprehensive plan changes dealing with the same issue. Uh, item D is dealing with, um, sea level rise, and, and these are all the result of, uh, actions taken at the state level, or the county level, uh, or by the school board through the inter-local agreement that was approved by the city. Uh, the most important one, I think the one that most everyone is interested in is the mobility management changes, uh, moving away from a transportation concurrency system where you're dealing with levels of service, uh, which, uh, has had the effect, and the state has recognized this, that it, it has the effect of shutting down development, uh, pushing development in rural areas or areas where there, uh, is not transportation issues, so having the unintended and opposite effect of creating sprawl, and in a, in a community like Pinellas County, which is largely urban, and especially in cities like Madera Beach, where it's very developed, everything's, uh, developed for the most part, and there are very limited opportunities you have for, uh, improving roadway capacity, it just makes sense to adopt a mobility management system. Uh, but again, this was something that was initiated by the county as early as 2013. Uh, they began working on this, and they want all of the communities, uh, by 2016 to adopt, uh, the consistent system. Um, and some of the things I've heard is, uh, impact fees are going away. That's not the case. They're, they're being called mobility fees, but they are still essentially the same thing and the same fees. Uh, but it really allows development, rather than shutting down development when you get to that point, and you're not at that point, uh, rather than shutting development down, it allows developers to look at, and, and the city to look at options such as, uh, mass transit, uh, a ferry service, um, uh, bike lanes, uh, sidewalks, and things like that. Uh, so i- it's just an alternative system, uh, that makes sense for the city. Uh, it's not going to affect the two developments that were already approved. Uh, those, they, they are still committed to the, uh, commitments they made in the development agreement, um, and for the most part, it really won't have a big impact on how, how development occurs, uh, because it really, you're looking at, at larger projects, things that, uh, are over fifty PM peak trips, uh, which most developments fall under that. Uh, and, you know, in, in a city like Madera Beach, when you're redeveloping, you can, you can, uh, subtract the, uh, trips that you're getting rid of and replacing. Uh, that's, that's a high-level review of this. Uh, we're recommending approval of this in order to maintain consistency with the county, uh, and to continue to make sure that, uh, development and, and funds are coordinated between the county and other communities. I'd be glad to go into greater detail on the, um, ordinances, if you like, uh, and get into some of these issues a little more, but at this point, I'll just, uh, leave it up to you to ask any questions.
Yeah, maybe we can touch on those as we review each of those, if anyone has questions about a specific ordinance.
Mr. Chair, what I, I'd just like to, you know, when people, I think people saw mobility, and then, uh, you know, I read on something that was sent to me that we're stripping our current ordinance to not be able to manage or, or regulate traffic based off of traffic numbers, and that's what got everyone up in arms, and that's how the, you know, the, uh, well, the weekend was ruined, so to speak. So, it, one person came into City Hall to ask about these from the time the packet was issued until this meeting, and so when people don't understand, I'm, I'm begging people at home that are watching this, come into City Hall and talk to Louis, talk to Michelle, let's be with the city manager, because we're not gonna lie to you. And, but people are starting to believe what they read on the internet, regardless of what it is, and, and just 'cause somebody posted, and somebody thinks that they know what they're reading, they might not be correct, and that's what got everybody up in arms, and before you know it, the traffic, you know, drama from six months ago, or three months ago, or two months ago came up. So, um, again, I, I appreciate your understanding, I appreciate, you know, um, uh, putting up with my rant this morning, but, uh, hopefully people got the idea that, you know, that we just, we're, doing those types of things are just creating too much chaos and, and havoc, and we've got enough of it, we gotta deal with what we got instead of creating more, so I'll get off my soapbox.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move to, uh, item A, New Business Ordinance 2016-06, Administrative Waiver Land Development Regulations Amendment. And can we, staff wanna speak to that?
Sure. This is for ordinance number 2016-06 pertaining to the administratively waiving the city's land development regulations when special circumstances or specific findings apply. It has been determined that city sta- to city staff that a strict application of the city's land development regulations has denied property owners, uh, privileges enjoyed by other property owners in the same vicinity and zoning district. An example of this is the older subdivisions that we have in the city did not have a zoning or, uh, setback requirements, and so a lot of them are maybe fifteen feet back, and now that we do have a zoning code, we require twenty, a twenty-foot setback, or a twenty-five-foot setback in other cases. So instead of having them go before a variance every single time, we are requesting this waiver so that either the city manager or designee can approve it in, an administrator waiver to grant relief from the required setbacks, up to a maximum variance of fifteen percent of the requirement, or a maximum of five feet, whichever is smaller. That's one of the things that administrative waiver will work towards. Another one is parking, and it is, uh, on-street parking, loading, and landscaping, up to a maximum reduction of ten percent, provided there is less than a one percent reduction in the impervious surface ratio on the site. So this will allow maybe a parking space that they need if they reduce their impervious surface, and give us some green area in place of that, um, waiver. This, uh, granting of the waiver will only be permitted if the applicant has determined there are special circumstances and specific findings that have been made, for an example of what I've noted on the setbacks and on the parking. Um, waivers will not be granted for permitted land uses, density, floor area ratios, specific prohibitions such as signs. A lot of times, the, the code will specifically say, "These signs are prohibited." The administrative waiver will not have an effect on those. Also procedural requirements. The waiver would not grant special privileges inconsistent with the limitations on other properties in the vicinity and zoning district in which the property is located, and would ensure that the approval complies with the required findings. Staff recommends a local planning agency, planning commission, recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for approval of ordinance 2016-06. This would schedule a first Board of Commissioner meeting, or reading, sorry, on July 12th, 2016, and contingent on the first reading approval, the second and final Board of Commissioner reading on August 9th, 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just so it was heard at home correctly, it's fifteen percent, not fifty percent. I heard fifty, and I, I panicked a little bit myself, so, um, this is, uh, I don't wanna call it miniscule, but we do get these requests where it comes in in cycles, and I need three feet, my neighbor doesn't care, do I really have to go in front of the magistrate? Um, you know, I think, you know, when we're talking about inches or, or that small bit of amount, it really does not make sense from a business decision standpoint to spend the money to have a magistrate hearing to deliberate over something that's a common-sense no-brainer, and so, um, it, this is not a Crawford's power-hungry and wants to, uh, deal with this because this probably will bring more drama to my office than anything else, but I think when you look at how we run the organization, this is a, a smart move, and, um, keeps things moving a little bit, and will save some money from frivol- not frivolous, but probably needless, uh, special magistrate hearings, or at least keep them shorter.
Okay. At this time, I, I think I would open it up to public commentary. Anyone wanna speak about this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public commentary, and I'll move to board discussion. Any comments from the board members, questions for staff?
So this deals with residential as well as commercial, any zoning, or...
Yes, it does.
Setbacks in general.
And setbacks, okay.
Yes.
And not that it was premeditated, it is actually agendaized for tomorrow night's meeting, but it was predicated that it was gonna be based off of a decision made by you all tonight.
And so the process that one would have to follow in the past to seek something like this would be to go before a special magistrate or other exception provisions.
Correct.
Apply for a variance or go to the magistrate.
Correct. And not only would they have to go before a special magistrate, they would also need to make sure that letters were sent out to property owners twenty feet...
Right.
Or, I'm sorry, two hundred feet, and then it would also, the po- the property would also have to be posted.
Okay.
And then, like Shane mentioned, that we would have to pay for a special magistrate to come in and listen to those.
In here.
And we're talking two or three feet on some of them, and this would, you know, be helpful for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments by the board?
Question for the city attorneys, Tom, is this, this is relatively common. From what I understand, there's a lot of cities that have this type of regulation. We're not breaking any new ground here.
You're not breaking any new ground. There are other cities that have these types of administrative waivers. Usually it's in the larger cities, it's not in small, small beach communities, but, you know, with the type of development that's going on here in Madera Beach, or redevelopment, I should say, this is a good tool for the toolbox. And, um, just to remind you that these special magistrate hearings that take place, some of them, um, take a month, month-and-a-half process, in addition to publication costs, and notice costs, and so forth, the, the cost of the city for the special magistrate is, um, has been pretty high, too, several thousand dollars for each one of these cases that came before the special magistrate.
Oh, okay.
So you can save the taxpayers some dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
I, I have a question. Um, so if you were requesting a variance from a neighbor, you no longer would need to do that? You would go to the city?
The only time that we have a variance request from a neighbor is for Marines, so it would be like a dock variance or something like that.
So that stays in place?
That would not stay in place. I mean, we would still need that signature from the neighbor.
That does stay in place, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, that part stays.
Okay.
Yes, but if they did not sign off on it...
Correct.
They would not need to go to a special magistrate, if it was in that percentage and the five feet, whichever was smaller. Does that make sense? Okay.
Are there any other beach communities that use this?
I was able to take the majority of this from the Treasure Islands code.
Any further questions? Can I entertain a motion?
I motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a, uh, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll, Cheryl?
I'm gonna have Gwen do this one.
Oh! Gwen, practice, practice, Gwen. Call the roll, say everybody's name right.
Yes, I will.
I just wanna make sure that the motion is correct. So the motion is to recommend approval to the city commission. Is that, is that the make?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I wanna make sure. And that was okay with the second? Whoever made the second?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Tom.
Chairperson Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, finally, we got somebody that can say Rasmussen correctly.
I'm telling ya, that's impressive. That's impressive, Gwen.
But then, but then, secondly, I think we did just miscommunicate. So, in, in a dock situation, if your neighbor does not wanna sign off on it, but you would fall within this criteria, that would help you. So if your neighbor's saying, "No way," just being obstinate, let's say you need eighteen inches, you need eighteen inches, you would qualify under this, and you could come to City Hall and apply for the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to, uh, item B under New Business, Land Ordinance 2016-07, Concurrent Management Land Development Regulations Amendment. Just a quick summary, Mr. Serna, on this specific one?
All right, um, th- these are the land development code revisions to Chapter 90, dealing with concurrency, uh, deals, also deals with transportation concurrency as well as, uh, school concurrency. Uh, school concurrency, I didn't touch on as much in my, uh, previous conversation, but, uh, that's a result of 2011, uh, changes at the legislative, at the state level, uh, allowing communities to, uh, make school concurrency optional, and it was recommended by the school board, uh, in the inter-local agreement that, uh, the cities in Pinellas County, uh, do away with school concurrency. So, uh, this ordinance deals with both of those amendments. We are recommending that, uh, you forward this to the board with the recommendation of approval. Uh, it will be subject to the, uh, other approval and adoption at the state level, uh, and adoption of, at the city level of the, uh, comprehensive plan amendments that accompany this. But our recommendation is for approval.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for public commentary. Did anyone have any comments on this particular item on the agenda? No? Seeing none, I'll close public commentary, and I'll move to board discussion. Any questions, comments, or concerns by board members?
No, thank you.
No? Seeing none? Can I entertain a motion?
Motion approved, 2016-07.
Recommend approval to the board?
Recommend approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Can someone please call the roll, whether it be Gwen or Cheryl?
Sure. Chairperson Everett?
Yes.
Chairperson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number C, under New Business, which is ordinance number 2016-08, Transportation Element Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. And again, I'll defer to you, Mr. Serna.
Uh, yes, these are just the, uh, transportation, uh, corresponding transportation element changes that are required to implement mobility management. And I'd add, uh, I didn't mention this in my previous discussion, but, uh, a lot of this language in the, the ordinance that you, uh, previously recommended and in the comp plan, uh, was, comes from the county. Uh, we've also been following closely what other cities have been adopting and what has been acceptable, so our recommendation is also that you forward this ordinance with the recommendation of approval.
To the board. Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open up for public commentary on this agenda item. Anyone? No? Seeing none, I'll close the public commentary and move to board discussion.
I have a question. The operational level of service, uh, that you're deleting, that says Level D for peak hour, what is the operational level of service through, are we going through the FDOT? It's level of service?
I'm sorry, you're asking what that, what level of service D means?
No, you're, you're removing the operational level of service D, says shall be the standard for all roads within the cer- city. So what is the standard through the city? Are we going through the...
Well, basically...
Is the FDOT standard C?
No, actually, there, there is no level of service. The way, the way transportation concurrency works currently is, uh, when a development comes in, we review it, staff reviews it to make sure it's not going to adversely affect the adopted level of service by the, uh, adopted by the city. And if it's a no, which in every case it's been so far, it's been a no, uh, they pay their, they pay their impact fees and then go on their way. If it's a yes, that's where you get into paying for, uh, operational improvements. What, what the current, what the proposed system does is it does away with that level of service, so you don't look at solely the, uh, function of the roadway capacity, you're looking at more on a holistic, um, level, dealing with transit, bicycle, pedestrian. There's not a level of service per se. Basically, anything creating over fifty-one PM peak trips are going to have to address how they're going to, um, how they're going to, uh, address their, their, their particular impacts from their project. So rather than a yes or no, uh, it's everything over fifty is gonna be, how are you gonna address it, and you can get credit towards your multimodal impact fees from doing that. So I hope that explains it, it's a, it's a little...
It does. Yes, thank you. All right.
And so that was my understanding, they would allow us to encompass other means of transportation, other than driving in your car, so you could include bicycles and water taxi service and...
Yes, exactly.
Things like that into consideration for helping to take care of the additional traffic.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns from the board? No? Seeing none? I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll set a motion for yes.
Okay, to make a recommendation for passage?
Correct.
To the city board? Okay, very good. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. We have a motion and a second? Could Gwen call the roll, please?
Chairperson Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. We'll move to item D, under New Business, which is ordinance 2016-09, Coastal Management Element Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. And again, Mr. Serna, if you could give us a summary of that?
Uh, yes, this one's, uh, different. We haven't spoken, spoken on this before. This is, uh, dealing with the state mandate in 2015 that communities address in their coastal management elements the impact of, uh, sea level rise, and, uh, in our memorandum, we list, uh, six items that the, uh, this, uh, the comprehensive plans must address, and the city currently has some, um, policies and objectives that address these issues. The, uh, Madera Beach has done a good job of participating in the National Flood Insurance Protection Program and, and keeping up to date with that, and that, uh, goes long ways towards addressing these issues. Uh, but we've added some other policies, uh, in this, um, ordinance, and these are based on what other communities throughout the state are doing, and what other communities have done locally, uh, what they've adopted. There's a whole, uh, list of, you know, it's pretty wide open as far as what policies you can adopt to address this. These are just, uh, a handful that, uh, we feel comfortable will comply with the state mandate, and so we're recommending approval of this ordinance.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up for public commentary. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? No? Seeing none, I'll close public commentary and move to board discussion. Any questions on this one? Concerns, comments? Mike?
Yeah, what, uh, what all are, are we getting into then, as a city with this? I mean, is this gonna be a big burden on taxpayers, or what are we actually doing?
Well, we, we tried to come up with policies that would not be, uh, overly burdensome, um, because, like I said, the city's already participating in the National Flood Insurance Protection, and they're doing a good job in, you know, keeping up with the CRS, or the Community Rating System. Uh, so these policies are fairly innocuous, but they do address the concerns. It should not be too burdensome. I don't know if you have any particular concerns about any of the policies, but, uh, basically, it just says that, um, you need to consider sea level rise in, in making infrastructure decisions. Now, what that means in practice, I think, is if you're following the, the FEMA's regulations, their maps are pretty up to date, and they should take into account the latest data. So, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be too much of a difference on how you're doing business, but it is just something that is being done to address the state mandate.
So this deals with a storm event more than just gradual rise? Sea level rises, to me, is?
It, it is primarily dealing with storm events because there isn't a lot of, based on my research, there's a lot of hard data on what the impacts will be. It's, it's all over the place, especially when you try to localize it.
So would this be fluid with any changes that FEMA makes, like in mapping changes? Because they're currently remapping Pinellas now.
Yeah, as you can see, none of the policies have specific numbers.
Right.
So as long as we maintain, as long as the city maintains participation in that program, it shouldn't be a problem.
Right, and I saw you reference the NFIP community rating system. So if that change is due to mapping, this would, this would move with it then?
Yes.
So this will lower our flood insurance?
You wish. Everyone's but yours, Mike. Any further discussion on the board?
Mr. Chair, before you ask for a motion to approve?
Yes.
I see some, some scared commission members not knowing how to word the motion correctly. And so since we have a chance of losing our three most seasoned plan commissioners, this board makes a non-binding recommendation. Remember that word recommendation because that's, that's part of your motion probably 99% of the time to the board of commissioners. They can approve it or disapprove it, and so can you. So if you're looking to just have a coined or canned motion, it's always a motion to recommend approval or disapproval of ordinance, blah, 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 to the Madeira Beach City Commission, every single time. Get that down, you got it made. So a motion to recommend and go on from there. So that way you don't have to be shy about making a motion.
Very good. Okay, and with that, instruction?
I don't mean to be condescending.
Does anybody want to make a, no, I'm kidding, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2016-09. Textbook, thank you, Mike. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Gwen, could you call the roll, please?
Chairperson Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to item E under new business, ordinance 2016-10, public school facilities element comprehensive plan text amendment. Mr. Serna?
All right, this is just the changes to the public school facilities element to eliminate school concurrency. This one's fairly easy because it's primarily deleting policies and not adding in anything new. So it's deleting policies and renumbering, and we recommend that you make a recommendation of approval.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open it up once again to public commentary. Anyone have anything they'd like to say on this particular item on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public commentary and we'll move to board discussion. Any questions or for staff or?
Does this mean our resident children get to go to the Madeira Beach Middle School and Elementary School now?
Is this automatic admission to fundamental? I don't think so, Mike. Nice try there.
What can we do to change that?
We put up with the traffic, we should get our, let our kids go to their school, right?
I used, I went to the school board meeting and I said my kid could swim there on an incoming tide and swim home on an outgoing tide. And they still wouldn't let him go there.
Okay. Any pertinent comment to the motion? Or the, I'm sorry, the agenda item? No? No questions or concerns? With that, would someone like to make a motion on the, on the item?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2016-10.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike. We have a second. Gwen, could you please call the roll?
Chairperson Everett?
Yes.
Chairperson Brown? Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. That concludes the new business on the agenda. We, I don't believe we have any old business. That would move the planning, well, I'm sorry, I actually got out of order. Planning commission discussion was actually before old business, so I'm sorry. Did any, did anyone on the commission have anything they wanted to bring up? I do, but I'll defer to anyone else first.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can maybe, and hopefully not steal your thunder, obviously, and I mentioned it before, we have the possibility of losing three of our most tenured members, number one being you, Mr. Chair, and at least from the seat that I sit in, I want to just thank you for your service. I think you run a very productive and fair meeting. It's too bad that Jeff Brown's not here tonight. When he filled in for you, he did the exact same thing. Commissioner Noble, he's the only one crazy enough to actually reapply for his spot. The two of you have decided to bow out gracefully, but we do appreciate your service. So with that, I think that probably deserves a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing back all that material.
No, I'm keeping it.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, absolutely. The reason I bought this stuff, and I have read every single one of these documents, and I'm sorry that there's not more people in the audience, because a lot of times, people go, oh, I want to be on the planning board. That sounds fun, let's do that. It's a lot of work, and in some cases, it's very controversial. So I commend everyone who volunteers their time and service on this board. Mike, you've been here forever. I really commend you for your service. You're definitely the most tenured member of the board, because sometimes it gets a little testy. But you know what? I think that every, everybody up here lives and works in the city of Madeira Beach. They don't necessarily work here, but they all work. I don't think we have anybody that's retired, that I'm aware. So everybody works, everybody drives to the city, everybody commutes to and fro. So when we speak about traffic impact and community impact, we're talking about the city in which we live. And I think everybody deals with it with a lot of passion, and, and I really think that everybody's trying to do the best thing that they feel is in the best interest of the city. And I don't think anybody has an agenda, that I've been aware, and quite, quite frankly, I resent some of that that's happened lately. Listening to Commissioner Shontz's resignation broke my heart to have somebody to give that many years of service. I mean, I've only served for six years, which is nothing, which is a dot compared to what to her service. But, but I commend anyone who volunteers to serve, and I encourage people to serve. You know, it's, I've, I've done two terms. I think that's enough for me for now. So, so this is my last meeting, but I, I want to thank everybody for their support. City staff, very professional and outstanding job. I appreciate your work and your effort. I know how hard you work. Anytime I've asked for something, I've gotten it immediately, and I appreciate that. And I think the information's good. I read all my packet every time, and I think most members do, and I think that's taken for granted, because we read a lot of material. This is what I've, this is some of what I've read. I couldn't carry all of it, but this is some of what I've read over the last six years. Mike, I, I venture, it would frighten me to know how much you've read in your tenure. So, so anyway, that, that's it for me. I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity to serve, to thank the commissioners for their confidence in me and allowing me to serve two successive terms. And who knows, one day I might be back, we'll see. So I'm trying to find a less controversial board to serve on, but I haven't found one yet.
Jim, there's a, there's a spot on the Civil Service Commission in the Library Board if you're interested.
Library Board? Now, wait a minute, that might be good. Nobody reads books anymore. I could be safe there.
That might be the toughest one out of them all.
Okay, there you, uh-oh, well, never mind.
You definitely served during, at least during my tenure, during the most stressful times, so I appreciate you. And I'm not always a miracle worker, but I did go into Vince's office, and we're not even going to prorate your $50 gift card.
Wow! I'm going to get the whole deal?
Yep, for all that work, we're not even going to prorate it. We'll get you the whole year's worth of pay.
And let me tell you, it's like I tell people, it's a Visa gift card which can be spent worldwide. Okay? Worldwide.
We got your request.
So thank you.
Gwen, if you can make that happen with Vince tomorrow?
No, thank you. There you go. That's not happening, okay. All right. Any other planning commission discussion while we're on that? I don't think we had any other business to discuss on the planning board. I know there was some discussion about meeting time. I think everybody kind of said seven was good.
You know, we got, we got, you know, criticized that we're trying to eliminate the ability for people at work to show up at six, but you all do. So it's, it's not an issue for staff. If it's not an issue for y'all, it's seven o'clock is fine.
Okay, good.
I will not be able to be here on August 8th if there's...
Well, the good news about...
I'll be out of the country, so I won't be able to be here.
That's, that's the best excuse you can probably have, but...
You're not going to Skype in, or?
I will not be in.
I'll be at a wedding in Columbia, so...
Well, here we go. We've, we've only got one item on the agenda, and Michelle and I have been passing notes back and forth to each other. It's, it's an old ordinance, it's not time sensitive, so if it be the will of the board, let's just play hooky on August 8th and we'll start it up again in September.
Okay, so you have two of you already, we know, aren't, aren't available. We can just push that?
Yeah, the only reason would be to appoint the new members, and we can do that in September as well.
Okay.
So we'll let the applicants know.
Okay, good, thank you.
Not a lot of applicants, so if you know anybody that's interested in working for $50 a year?
I've had one of my neighbors ask, now they're, it's not district, right? So for the planning commission, okay, I'll let them know.
It's not district, and after speaking with the city attorney today, it's not like being